Oh, sorry, Tammy. Good evening. Welcome to the October 8th, 2013 Meeting of Manchester Town Council. First order of business is approval of the September 10 minutes.
Make a motion to approve the September minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Next, we have receipt of the September Treasuries Report. So I think this is last month we had the check register, right?
Actually, it's my statement to receive of the August Treasury Report and September Check Register. I just got the report, I probably do a basic yesterday for September.
Okay. Not a problem, so you're gonna amend your agenda. So we can probably handle those together, so it'll be receipt of the August Treasury Report, September Check Register. Since we're not approving, we're making us receive those together. Motion to receive?
Make a motion to receive.
A second motion?
Motion to second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report. This definitely is not intentional. Last month, we had a moment of silence in memoriam of Officer Jason Schneider and thanked those that had pulled together very quickly to help out with really the large-scale operation of the, you know, taking care of the house and making sure that was secured. And then, of course, we had the funeral in town as well. Wanted to publicly thank Royal Bar's Bus, right up the street, for providing transportation for that event, and that's something that they did for the community. So publicly thank you to Royal Bar's Bus, and if you see them out and about, definitely pass along your thanks. Next, we have Halloween this month. Halloween in -- the debate did not come up this year to change the date of Halloween, so Halloween will remain again as October 31st, which is a Thursday. We do what, 6:30 to 8:30, or 6 to 8?
6:30.
6:30 to 8:30. If you choose not to participate, please turn off your light. Those of you that will be out and about, either with children or without children, please take extra special cares. There'll be thousands of children, people come from all over to trick-or-treat in the neighborhoods around Manchester. We will have full staff police on that night doing the best we can to provide, you know, additional coverage in those neighborhoods, but it's really gonna be up to people just to really slow down and take it easy that day. Couple other quick announcements. Next Tuesday, October 15th, a week from today, we have brush pickup. If you're gonna have brush, we have on the website the list of requirements, but essentially cut it into four, no longer than four feet, no bigger than four inches. If you can have it all facing the same way down at the end of the street together, that makes it easier for our guys to get it and get that out of there for you. The following day, we have bulk trash pickup, Wednesday, October 16th. Again, if you have bulk trash, Kelly, you're still supposed to call Hughes, right, and let them know that you have a bulk item. There may be special instructions if it's a refrigerator, they tell you to take the door off and that kind of thing. One more thing, I wanted to thank Steve here in town for some work that he did, Dale, you may have seen, but Steve has helped out the rec programs with the ball field lights a number of times with some, you know, I'll call them emergencies, but, you know, with the lights not being, operating in the manner that they should up there at the ball fields. And, you know, I've been involved there eight years, eight or nine years. Dale was there about 10 years before me, and they're working better now than I've ever seen them work. It's really getting back to the point where you can actually hold night events up there again. So it's a real positive thing, hundreds of kids up there every weekend, and so thank you, Steve, for your efforts in pulling that together. And that is all I have. So move on to Town Administration Report.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead with the September Administrative Report. Under pending items, there's been no change in regards to the sheets rebuild for the S.H.A. projects. The MDOT tour meeting with the MDOT Secretary, Councilperson Black attended that, I appreciate that, I couldn't attend that day. Our M.E.A. grant, the information's being gathered from BG&E and our mechanical contractor in regards to a furnace replacement. We're also gathering information from solar contractors in reference to the projects for here at Town Hall and our maintenance shop. Also, we're putting together a renewable energy plan as well as an energy savings plan for M.E.A., and we should have that finished hopefully within the next week. Our Sustainable Communities Work Group, the application was completed online and submitted on September 30th. We did receive hard copies, and we're in the process of distributing them. I believe you should have received them via email. And also, I'm scheduling a meeting with the work group sometime in November to get the group back again. Also, an action item is the purchase of the property at 3337 Victory Street. I believe that'll come up later. New construction continues under code enforcement, the synthetic drug ordinance. I believe Councilperson Smith and Black and our Plains Zoning Administrator, Michelle Wilder, attended a informational meeting this evening before this meeting, so I'm sure that they'll have some information to bring back to the council on that. Under miscellaneous items, I attended the WRCC meeting on September the 25th, and our meeting centered around the presentation of stormwater management proposals to the county mayors, which that meeting will be held on October the 16th. Mayor Warner advised me that he cannot make that meeting, but I do have Councilpersons Wilder and Black who will be attending. That meeting will be at the Carroll Arts Center. I sent out an email where the time, I believe I sent it out at 7:00 P.M. I will verify that at a meeting that I'm going to attend tomorrow. That change in time may have been changed to 6:30, but I will let you know about that. Also, I'm setting up a tour for the mayor and the council, and I'd like to do that on a Saturday morning sometime in November. I had a tough time over the last several months there, everybody's moving around on vacations and everything, so I think, once we get settled in, I think I'll pick a Saturday morning and let everybody know that. Okay, moving right along, the September 2013 Public Works Report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for September. I will tell you this, with the lack of precipitation, some of our wells are showing a little bit of stress due to the lack of rain. I want to remind the public to conserve as much as possible due to this unseasonably dry weather. Now, of course, we picked up an inch and a quarter of rain yesterday. It looks like the next several days it might be rainy, but still, you know, I wanna bring that to everybody's attention. Under wastewater, I supplied you a response to questions that the town had on our draft discharge permit. How can I say this? We won some and we lost some, so, you know, our staff is in the process of preparing to meet all the new requirements before our actual permit is issued, so we're prepared for that. The grit removal system is back in service at the treatment plant, and we did do a substantial upgrade to our slug depress at the wastewater treatment plant. Under NPDS and stormwater and watershed implementation plan, we were to have a meeting with MDE on September the 25th. Unfortunately, this was canceled due to the fact that MDE needs more time to examine the questions that were posed to them. I believe they were coming out to give a basic dog and pony show, as they do at other locations, and our county, our WRCC committee basically put together a package of questions, which was not in their realm of presentations that they give. So hopefully that'll be rescheduled within the next month. I talked to you a little bit about the October 16th meeting. I did last Thursday, and this is kinda off-track a little bit, it's not on the agenda there. Last Thursday, I attended a pay-as-you-throw informational meeting put on by Carroll County, and I was able to listen to one of the speakers. Basically, there's a small town in western Pennsylvania with 25,000 people, and basically, it's a pay-as-you-throw program. They supply the number of toters for your trash, recycling, grass clippings, and they pay, the residents pay so much per month for these containers. But one thing I got out of that, our numbers are very good, our recycling numbers are very good, but I think we can do a lot better. I think what's holding us back is the recycling containers that the folks use out in our community are too small. And I think what happens when those small 18-gallon containers get filled up, a lot of recycling materials are going right into their trash can. So I contacted the county to see if there's a grant program that I can get larger recycling bins for our residents. Unfortunately, she's checking for me, but that program went out, I believe she said, in 2010 or 2011. So I'm gonna look at different avenues and see what we can do, but I think if the folks out in our community, which are doing a fantastic job, they are recycling, but I think we can get a little bit more bang for our buck if we gave them larger containers, so I'm checking on that.
Is this something Jared Schumacher could work on?
Yes, that's a possibility, yes. So I think, I think the county, if I'm not mistaken, I think Maria Myers over at the county told me that they received 10,000 bins, that they were distributed to the residents of the county, which I can understand that. She did give me one avenue to take, and that was contact Hughes Trash, our hauler, and I have yet to do that, but I think we can, we can work out something to make our recycling, you know, just take it to the next level, so I have to do some checking on that.
Hey, Steve, what if, I mean, is there a way that we could, everybody already has trash cans, right?
Correct, yes.
Could we get, you know, big, large stickers, large signs, or somehow something that would identify this trash can as recycling, that way we could repurpose the trash cans that are already out there? And if, like, you know, you have two big trash cans, it convinces people to recycle more, turn one of them into recycling, another one into trash?
Possibility.
But we gotta find a way to, you know, signify it.
Sure, yeah, there's a couple, yeah, there's a couple ways we could look into that, sure.
And that may be cheaper than buying.
Yeah, I mean, the stickers would be the way to go, you're absolutely right, so.
Yeah.
I think it's just human nature, I think when you look, and I shouldn't admit this, but I do, if my recycling bin is full, and I have one last recycling piece, and I know if I set it on top, it's gonna blow away, I'm gonna put it in the trash. I mean, it's just human nature, you just do that.
If only they sold five packs, then you'd have enough room in your recycled bin.
Yeah, I know, that's right, that's right.
Steve, I'm sorry, I was taking a note earlier when you brought up the program as pay-as-you-go. How does that work? Because you said they actually pay for these bins.
Right, this particular, this particular town has three different-sized containers, and they recommend that you go with the largest container. Now, what you get for $17 a month, you get a large, these are all toters, by the way, the ones, you know, they hook on the back of the truck and dump. You get a toter for trash, solid waste. You get a toter for recyclable materials, and then this particular town collects grass clippings. So you get three toters for $17 a month. Now, anything larger than that, let's say you have a washer and dryer or refrigerator, you would buy a sticker, and you would put that sticker on that refrigerator, that would be a special pickup, I think they sell for five bucks. Let's say you have a air conditioner, that would be basically smaller than the refrigerator, so you'd get a smaller sticker for like three bucks. So then, the township controls everything, they bill the residents on a monthly basis, just, they bill it on their water and sewer bill, and that's how they work it out. And then they renegotiate their contract, I believe, every five years, similar to what we do, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, maintenance frozen parks. As Mayor Warner said, you know, we did do some repairs to the lights on D Field. Unfortunately, we had a little problem Friday night, we took care of that today, so hopefully that won't happen again. Unfortunately, we did have some vandalism in Christmas Tree Park on September the 9th. On September the 17th, none of our employees successfully completed a State Highway Administration Certified Flagler Training Class, and in conjunction with the Nature Foundation, the split rail fence and parking area around the new pavilion on Wounded Street was completed on September the 20th. Unfortunately, as I've been reporting back to the mayor and the council, our park supervisor, Dave Brown, was involved in an accident at Christmas Tree Park a few weeks ago. I wanna report that Dave's doing very well. He still has a long, tough road ahead of him as far as therapy is concerned, but he's doing very well, he's doing excellent. But I do want to publicly commend three of our public works people, and that is Raymond Wake, our maintenance supervisor, Tim Black, maintenance crew member, and Randy Baer, maintenance crew member. They jumped into action, they controlled the bleeding till the medic unit got there, and they did a fantastic job, so I wanna commend them on that.
Steve, I wanna tell you, I did see him Sunday. I was at a function, he was there, and he's in great spirits, he said he's, can't wait to come back, but he's getting ready to start his therapy, but he was doing great.
Yes, he is, he is, so. Okay, that should be it. Any questions for me?
No questions for Steve? We do have, and it's not separately on the agenda, Steve, you did mention, in here somewhere, I was just looking for it, the Victory Street property?
Number six.
Oh, there it is. So is this something you wanna bring up as an action item now?
You can, that's, that's fine.
So everybody's up to speed, right? And I guess we'll, we can bring this up. We have, the town has been in negotiations with the owner of 3337 Victory Street, which is a property that was previously used as a doctor's office, did a daycare at one point in time. It's a, right there at a bus to Christmas Tree Park, and it's been vacant and unused for, you know, I guess a couple of years now, it seems like, right?
It's been three years, yes.
Yeah, so we've been in negotiations with Dr. Middleton, who owns the property. We took a tour and had an inspection done, had an appraisal, and came to a tentative agreement on the price of $170,000, which is what the appraisal came in at. All parties present at that meeting, including Dr. Middleton, were in agreement with that. So what we need from this group would be the approval to amend the budget, to increase the budget by $170,000. We would balance it out by taking money out of the money market in the same amount, and then we would go ahead with the purchase of the property. And figure out what we're, well, we have ideas, but, so, and I guess for the purpose of the story, that the property would then become part of the town municipal complex. We would look to internally have a form of task force to decide on the best use of the property in terms of town office space, you know, which is kinda busting at the seams here. The police department is really, you know, not in, to the point where it has to be, you know, there's, it's technically handicap accessible, so we have issues where this building's not handicap accessible, we have issues with mold and the roof, and the police department's not large enough, so we don't have, I think Vince could speak to it, but we don't have the facilities to house juveniles and adults separately, which is, you know, can be an issue. So we have some things to figure out, and this would help provide a piece of the puzzle to help us figure out those issues. So we don't have an immediate plan on what the building will be used for, but this is a piece of the puzzle which would allow us to figure out those answers.
Okay.
Just take the motion?
Take a motion.
I make a motion that we amend the budget by $170,000 in order to purchase 3337 Victory Street.
I'll second the motion. Motion to second, any other discussion? None, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So Steve, we can go ahead then and move forward with the attorneys and start that process.
Correct, we're good.
Before we move on, would make everyone aware, and Steve, I didn't see it in your report, but I'm saying tomorrow is Steve's 34th anniversary with the town.
Oh, is it? I applaud when you're having fun.
I think we should thank him for all his hard work. We never see anything about him. I mean, from the funeral, I know he had a lot to do with that, with getting everything set, getting Royal Bar set up, so they did the buses, I mean, there's so many things he does that nobody really realized. I certainly didn't realize before I came here, so, thank you.
Thank you, it's a team effort, we have a good team.
I think, without a doubt, you know, Manchester's a smaller community, but I don't think it's debatable that we easily have the best town manager, town administrator in the county. And I hear that from people that, you know, throughout the county on a consistent basis, so. So 16 more years, you're eligible for retirement.
There you go. I get a key to the city.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for Steve? Move on to the police report. Before we get into this, bring the public at large up to speed a little bit, so everybody in the council, I think, is up to speed. We are moving through the process with another police chief candidate. I think we're all pretty happy with the person that we're heading down this path with. We're not at the point yet where the name's gonna become public, but we are, we have initiated the background check, and we're working with City of Westminster to do that, so that's where we are. Hope to have an announcement very soon, hopefully in November, if not November, then, you know, I really hope in December. So we're closer than we've been in some time, and I think everybody, I'm speaking for everybody, but I hope that everybody's excited with, you know, with where we are, and we're looking forward to getting back up to full strength here today. So police report, 75 calls for service during September, no juvenile arrests, were a couple arrests for burglary, a couple of warrants, traffic offenses, one assault, 73 traffic stops, 28 citations, 45 warnings. We continue to deploy the trailer. That will work for some time, we do have some issues with it sometime in the winter because we don't get enough sunlight to charge it fully, so it operates the way it's supposed to operate during the day, but we'll use that as long as we can. If you have areas in town, those of you that are out there that you believe are a problem, please continue to send those in. Those don't fall unde fixed, we do try to respond to those with both police presence, the trailer, anything we can do to kinda keep up with the problem areas for speeding. Any questions with the police report? Moving right along. Next, we have introduction of the Manchester Valley High School Principal, Dr. Fisher, and Tom Riddle, Business Information Management Academy Leader.
Thank you very much for having me this evening. I had hoped to come and introduce myself and Tom Riddle, one of our academy leaders, and to just share a little bit of the good news about our school, and to make a request. I'm very happy to be the second principal of Manchester Valley High School. For those that don't know me already, I am a product of Carroll County, I grew up in Sykesville, and went to school at Liberty High School. I started my career at North Carroll, and I was an administrator at North Carroll during the split when Manchester Valley was built. It's really neat to find myself here at this point in my career, I'm excited, it's an awesome community, I've had the pleasure of working with Manchester three times in my career, and each time has reinvigorated me professionally with what I like to do. The good news that I had to share is that we've recently conducted an accreditation process for our high school, and the high school has just received word that we are accredited by the Middle States Consortium. They accredit schools in our region from New York, Delaware, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and DC, and that consortium judges us on a set of 12 rigorous standards, that when our applicants or our graduates apply to colleges, they'll be able to see that our school's credited and adds a certain strength to our diploma, to indicate that we've satisfied what a typical school would satisfy for other students. And that's really helpful if our students apply anywhere where they're not familiar with what a great town we have. So I'm here because although we've established ourselves as a school the past four years, I see that there's tremendous room for improvement. And I don't mean that to speak poorly of any of the students, or staff, or administration that has come before me. However, when you look at our attendance rate, when you look at our scores on the SAT, when you look at our advanced placement or our state testing, there's room for us to improve. We sit toward the bottom half of the county in our performance, but I feel that we could easily be number one or number two in the county. And I hope that when the time of my tenure is over, I can be recalled as someone who helped the school move from having a good, solid school to something that's maybe even better. One of my personal mantras is that the enemy of great is good, and if you do the same things, you'll get the same results. So we are looking to put some programs in place to improve our advanced placement program, and to help more students have access to that curriculum to make themselves competitive when they apply for college, or the military, or whatever their next career venture may be. We're looking to improve our SAT scores, to improve our state scores, but we'd also like to help students with things that I think most of us would consider real. We are an academy school. Part of what that means is we provide an experience for our students that exposes them to a palette of different career offerings, so that they can make better decisions about what major they'd like to pursue, or what line of work. My goal as an academy school principal is not to have our graduates leave to go work in a job. I'd like our graduates to leave to pursue a career. Something that can also be rewarding but sustaining is they try to become productive citizens in Manchester, or in Carroll County. So I need help. I learned from my time at FSK, where I was an assistant principal recently, that a school can be more successful when it operates as the center, the focal point, of the communities. Obviously, we're in Manchester Town Limits, but we do draw students from Limero and from other parts of the county, including Millers. I'd like the school to be the focal point for all of those communities, but most importantly for Manchester. So I'm going to form a group in April that will be known as the Manchester Valley Advisory Council. I did send the council members and the mayor, correspondents, to sort of outline part of what this group would do. I would like the group to define what its purpose and charter and mission would be. However, I view the group as a chance to harness some community resources, and I think our community does a great job of supporting our school. So for all those viewing at home and for you, we're not looking for money. This is not a fundraising event, this is not another booster group. What I'd like to do is to bring together different people from the community, business leaders, police, fire, EMS, council people, parents, student leaders, to try to get our social capital and our networking skills up and running, so that I can place students in businesses, or with the town, or with the police, to help give them real-world experience that will prepare them for a career, but also give back to the community. I see this council as a two-way exchange, with not only opportunities being provided by the larger community, but us providing opportunities to the larger community. Very thankful that at Francis Scott Key, there were two town council members in Tawny Town that attended regularly. Those town council members were just indispensable when it came to working with the businesses, when it came to working with the public. They had great ideas, they were true servants of the community. So my appeal to you this evening, before I let Tommy talk, a little bit about what we're trying to do with academies, is I'd like one or two or all of you to consider to participate in our advisory council. I really see it as a chance to network with mama, I see it as a chance to network with you, I see it as a chance to network with our families, with our students, and harness resources, either bringing in more guest speakers, or having our teachers go out to complete externships, or providing students for internships, or taking donations of materials in kind, or whatever it may be, and maybe a small, just a small bit of fundraising to generate some excitement for some things that we can give for student rewards. We'd like to work with the Carroll Foundation in this endeavor. It won't be a PTA, it'll have a very prescriptive business-like atmosphere. I will not be the person that runs it, but I will be an ex officio member that will participate and help guide to make sure that the advisory council goals are congruent with our own mission and vision and goals in the school. But I encourage anyone that's willing on the council to contact me, I'd be happy to meet with you at your convenience to explain more, but more importantly, I thank you for always being supporters of Manchester Valley, and I look forward to any ideas for any partnerships that we can have with our students, with our school, and with you in the future. But I'd like, if you don't mind, for Mr. Real, to tell you just a little bit about what we're doing instructionally with our academies. Thank you.
So Dr. Fisher said that we're an academy school. What that means is that we have four academies in our school. I lead the Business Information Management Academy. We also have the Arts Humanities and Communications Academy, the STEM Academy, which is obviously a big push nationwide, science, technology, engineering, math, and the Health Human and Social Services Academy. And the goal of each of those academies is to give the kids more direction choosing their electives, but also to give them some career experience, because we know that learning doesn't take place in a vacuum, and so we need to give them experiences with how this, you know, what you're learning, US history, really applies to your future business career, or applies to your nursing career, or whatever. And so this year, we as our academy schools, trying to refine itself and just make ourselves stronger, trying to look at how can we as teachers be more transdisciplinary, as in how can we make sure that the English teacher and so- As in, how can we make sure that the English teacher and associate teacher are working together to work on the same goal for the students, and get the students to see how they connect? But also, how can we take our lessons and make them more college degree readiness? So how can we take our lesson and take it one step further and say, this is how you're gonna use this skill in the real world? Or, this is how you're going to benefit from this? Or, this is how it affects your town? I think as a, as a school, we've done a lot in those last four years to serve the town, and the town's done more to serve us, and so I'd like to see that continue. But I think that as a school, we need to do better with making sure our kids understand college readiness. What does it mean to live in Manchester, as a citizen in Manchester, and as a worker or a career person in Manchester? And what are the real-world experiences that they have? And that's the whole goal of our academy system, is teachers working together with community support to give kids real-world experience, so they understand that, yeah, their SATs were really important, but really what our goal is, is to prepare them for work, and prepare them to be active, productive citizens.
Thank you.
Any questions for, that was very informative.
Yeah.
Do you know when, when do you anticipate starting the council up?
I think there's a, we have a lot to do in our school, so I, as a new leader, did not want to come into a school and say, we're gonna make broad sweeping changes while I only had a month to prepare.
Right.
Part of it is, I need to learn the job. I'm finding it very difficult to operate without the advisory council, because some of the things that I'd like to do for students, there are Carroll County Board of Education rules that prohibit me from doing certain things, and I like to have a group that I can operate under. I'd like to get the group up and running for next year. I'd like to go through the charter and mission process in April. I intend to have a one-hour meeting once a month where this group can conduct business. I do not expect people to come to the business to open up their wallets. I expect them to just be wholeheartedly engaged in the process and open up those social connections, because I know some people in the community, but I know that you know lots of people in the community. And if I can get the right combination of parents, the right combination of elected officials, the right combination of business leaders, I think we can all benefit each other. I can help, if I can turn the school into the top school in the county, our property values and our appeal in our community will go up. I'll be able to offer more programs in the school, and the possibilities will just spiral and just really be good for all of us. So, April will be a starting point. I'm gonna look at those that are involved. I know that Mr. Miller said that he would be able to, under his duties at ten. I know that the fire department's interested in being involved. And I know that so far, I've had a great relationship with Mala, a lot of partnerships already, they'd like to be involved. So hopefully, we can be up and running with the charter in July, and really start to make a difference in the schools and in the town next school year.
That sounds excellent. Yeah, it's really exciting opportunity, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions, comments from the community? Did anybody sign in, Lauren? No one signed in? Anyone not given a chance to sign in, would like to bring anything up? Hearing none, we'll go to committee reports.
I have a meeting on Thursday. There was not a meeting since the last one, they rescheduled, so I'll go Thursday, I'll report at the next one.
Okay. Councilman Black?
Steve summarized the sustainability task force in the November potential meeting, but for planning and zoning, we did have one this past month, and basically, we were looking at the preliminary approval, if you will, for the plans for 16 new homes off the Susan Anne Drive, Road, pardon me?
Susan Anne Drive.
Susan Anne Drive, okay. And so they're just conceptual plans, but we're moving forward on that initial.
Is this the stuff right up close to Charmel?
Yes.
Yes, at the corner of Charmel.
So if it's concept, is it, everything okay with what they're doing in terms of moving dirt around and everything over there?
That is, yes, they got a grading approval to do that, which are okay. They can do that.
Okay.
That's it.
Councilman Pacella?
The Manchester Area Merchants Association is sponsoring the 2013 Halloween costume contest. It's for the kids, but open to everyone. It is scheduled for October 29th, 2013, with a rain date of October 30th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Activities will be at the Gary Business Center at 3321 Main Street, which is directly across from the Longview Nursing Home, and at the Manchester Elementary School on York Street, with participants walking from these two points past the judging stand on the east side of Main Street. There'll be three old-fashioned cake walks, three pizza walks will be conducted at the Gary Business Center. Steve, will this be posted on our site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Copy. Okay.
Winners will be announced after the last pizza walk. Winners must be present to receive rewards, and categories are funniest, scariest, cutest, best homemade, most colorful. And again, it's sponsored by Manchester Area Merchants Association.
Is that the first year for that?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Hough?
I have nothing to report. They'll have a meeting next Monday.
Okay.
So, nothing.
And Councilman Black?
As Steve had mentioned, Councilperson Black and I will be attending a meeting with the Water Resource Coordination Council to discuss stormwater issues. So I guess after that meeting, we'll bring back any information that we can share. Steve, I did get the list of capital projects, so you'd send me, thank you. I'll be getting with you probably sometime very soon, to kind of go over all those projects, to see where we are, and where I can get more involved, to help in any way.
Correct. We'll have a staff meeting tomorrow morning. I'll update you on how far along we are with those specific projects, so I'll send you an email.
Okay. It sounds like we have a number of ongoing projects.
We do, yes.
Everybody's working, you know, very busy. That's it for me.
You know, we don't have Natalie tonight.
Correct. Natalie had a game. She said that she would try to make it, unfortunately, she may be a little late, so.
And they lost?
They're eight one, they lost tonight.
Oh, did they, really?
Yes.
This is field hockey?
My daughter called me, very upset, so yes. Sentry.
Wow.
Okay. Anything else for this group?
Yes. Go ahead.
We just wanted to mention that prior to the council meeting tonight, Councilperson Smith and I, along with Michelle Wilder and two of our Manchester police officers, by the way, the leadership team that put it on, said to me, hey, Manchester's well-represented tonight. So they came to me and said that, which is, I think, big kudos to us for a synthetic drug and drug trend seminar. This is Drug Awareness Month in Carroll County, actually everywhere in the nation, but Carroll County does a very concerted effort to make folks aware of what's happening in terms of just street drugs, the prescription drugs is the hottie right now on the, on the street for Carroll County. And so, we're looking forward to working through some, some sample or model code enforcements, drug ordinances that might help our officers to have a little bit of weight behind their efforts in the community. We just want to make sure that everyone's safe, and that this is something that we're not only conscious of, but we are making an actual effort. So, the commissioners were present tonight, and they are fully in support of the local municipalities doing what they need to do to have safe communities, so.
Good.
I mean, I learned, just for one thing, tonight, I had no idea, out of all the drug testing, a third of the drug testing has synthetic drugs in what they find. A third. That's a lot.
Wow.
Synthetic, you know, marijuana.
Synthetic marijuana, you know, so, I mean, that's a lot. So, for us moving forward on, I think that'll be a big, big thing for Manchester.
Pretty good. Anything else? No? Take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, will you adjourn? I'll second it.
All right, good night.
All right. Good meeting.
I'm trying to drag it out, maybe I swear.